Before I call a meeting in order today, I would like to ask Mr. Matt Terry if he would lead us in the presence of the flag and then I will say a prayer for him.
The flag is with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great city that we live in. We thank you for this Board of Commissioners. We ask that you would give us the wisdom to conduct our meeting tonight in the way it should be conducted and always take care of city business. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And after all this meeting in order, we're going to go to City Commission. Tonight, we'll be working on a three-man board. Commissioner Lowry is on vacation and Commissioner Thursday is out seeking medical for some medical issues, treatments for some medical issues. So he won't be with us tonight either. All right. First thing we have is consent agenda. We did do that, the regular commission meeting on 10-3-17 and then a workshop we had on 10-5.
Motion approved.
We're motioning Commissioner Asbrooke, Secretary of State, Commissioner Mizet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will hand out Mr. Warren Yager, our EDC Director at this time, I would say. Is that correct?
They have given me several titles, but...
A welcome.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I wanted to come briefly discuss with you some of the issues with oil spill money. As you all know, there was some economic development money that Ms. Pam Bonney sued and got for the state of Florida. It was 1.5 billion for the eight disproportionately affected counties, which includes Gulf, over a period of 15 years. And they set up what they called the Triumph Board. And the Triumph Board's been working over the last few months to try to set up a process about how these eight counties can apply for these dollars and actually individual or businesses can actually apply for this money. At any rate, it's been a slow process up to the last week. And last week, they had presented a kind of a two-tier system of an application process and they set up a pre-application and an application. And what they did was open up the pre-applications up until November 15th. So we got a short timeframe to actually get something in. I had been talking to our Commissioners and I've talked to probably each one of you individually and I've talked to some of your staff about different oil spill monies and what to do with it. What our Board of County Commissioners voted today was to do a pre-application. All of our Board members have been talking about how do we stand the port up. It seems like that's kind of the diamond in the rough, that if we can get the port going, then that's other things are going to come. And one of the things that they talked about is infrastructure on that port side. They've talked about everything from general infrastructure and we're building a roadway in there now to help International Wood Group that have set up, to floating drydocks. So what I wanted to come mention to you today is our Board has said that that's what they're going to put, put a pre-application in. I wanted to bring a pre-application to you. I've given that to your staff. It's a brief one-page, and so it's something that's very easy to fill out. I think I've also left an application there and they're doing a little bit of work on that application, so that won't be the final application for this Triumph money. But I wanted to come today in the Triumph legislation. It requires the Board of County Commissioners to work with the other elected boards in your community to work on these issues. And actually, if you have projects, to take those projects in and submit them to Triumph if you want to go through the county. And you don't necessarily have to go through the county, but you do get a few points extra to go through the county. So they'll, they know that everybody's working together, I think was the reason for that. So I'm here today for, just to answer any questions that you might have on Triumph and to see if you might want to just join in that application. We'll be working, what they authorize the staff to do is work with all parties, including the Port Authority and others that might be involved in trying to get that port running and trying to get some jobs to our community. If you want to do a letter of support for that particular project, it's within the city limits of Port St. Joe, what we're trying to do down there at the port. Or if you want to submit another, that's, it's totally up to y'all. It's a short timeframe. However, wanted to make sure you understood, this is a rolling process. They will not set a date and then cut things off and then set a date a year from now. They will obviously give us, if two months from now we want to submit another project that comes from the city or the school board or the city of Weewalk, we can obviously do that. So if you have any questions on that particular process, I'm here. And again, I've talked to your staff a little bit and I've given them the applications. It will be on the Triumph website for anybody in the public that wants to take a look at that application process and read up on Triumph. But wanted to bring that forward today.
Warren, of course, this Board supports the Port Authority from day one to the tune of, you know, loaning the money to help them out of ditch and so forth. And the floating drydock, of course, on city property and we appreciate a chance to be a part of that. But my question is, the price of it, I understand, is pretty substantial. And I throw out $25 million, is that close?
We're hearing that to build the type of drydock that some of these folks want to use, it would be like 450 feet long by 120 feet wide.
Right.
So you are talking probably in the neighborhood of $20 million than we think.
My question getting around to that is, if that application gets approved, then that probably puts any other application aside because it, the expense up. So when, you know, you're putting all your money in one pot instead of being able to spread it out. So how do you respond to that?
Well, two things. We don't need to think small because the amount that we have guaranteed to come to each county is 5% of the first amount of money, 300 million. So it amounts to $15 million for each county that's guaranteed.
Right.
That still leaves 60% of that 300 million in a pot that we can apply for, that all eight counties still can apply for. So this is below 50%. If everybody, if every community or every county got their 15 million, you're still have the opportunity to get many millions more because of the amounts in there. So I don't want us to think that all we get is 5%, is 5% of that money, or 15 million.
But that's over 15 years, is that what you're saying?
Well, the 300 million is now, it's in there now. And the rest of it, the other, the other 1.2 billion dollars is coming in over the next 13 years, I think.
Is there any talk or estimate on the number of jobs that could be, floating drydocks created?
You know, there has been some talk, but nothing concrete. And that's why we want to get this pre-application in so we can kind of start discussions with possible folks to use that and see what kind of creation of jobs that we can get off that. We believe it will be substantial. And one of the things that I've talked to individual Commissioners on, they want to make sure that if this, if this creates 100 jobs, then the cost for whoever's using that drydock, because the public will own it, the cost may be a lot less if it's just 25 jobs. So I think based on how many jobs that an industry will bring to the community and use that drydock will be based on how much they're paying. So we're hoping that we can create 100 jobs out of that floating drydock.
Warren, I have a quick question for you. One of the concerns that I've had about this Triumph money from the start was matching grant amounts. It's easier for a city like Pensacola to build that drydock and match to the tune of a million dollar match. Do you ask us to match that million dollars, it's going to happen. So is there any disproportionate amounts that we would have to match depending on the size of your community?
No. Matter of fact, there's, in the statute, it talks about up to 50% match. However, all it says is they may require.
So that's up to the Board? That's up to the Triumph?
That's up to the Triumph Board. And they also have some leeway for communities that are small communities. And so I think at the end of the day, what we probably will foresee is they're going to take into account that this is a small community, this is a small county, and the match may be small. That being said, we still think that we will, if we do something on that particular property, which you know is owned by St. Joe Company, which is leased to a couple of other different companies. So we think that there may be some match with these folks too. So there may be some in-kind match that Triumph Board will take a look at and those type things. So I think, I think we'll be in good shape with a match.
And what is your recommendation on timing? This is a revolving program that will keep going on and on. Is it best to be first at bat or should we hold off? I mean, what's your opinion on that?
My opinion is we need to be in the game. And whether that, whether it's a great application to begin with or not, we may put this pre-application in and they might say, you know, we think you should fit it a different way or say it a different way. So, but I do think that we need to get this pre-application in because, because all it is, if you get through the pre-application process, it still does not guarantee that you're going to get funded. What it does is says, we think that this is an allowable expense for this particular Triumph money. So I think it's key to get this, get this particular pre-application in. And it's a small application, should be simple to put in.
Warren, I'm asking for our force of support on the floating drydock. I think it would be, be better if somebody on this Board, probably the Mayor, would have a seat at that table so we'd know a little bit more specifics as to in the city of Port St. Joe, how much infrastructure is going to be required, you know, water, sewer, those type things. So not knowing a lot about it, except what I'm hearing on the outside, I think you take that back to the county in any meetings that you have concerning that application. The city needs, whether it be the city manager, head of public works, the Mayor, I think somebody needs to be...
Well, I think that's what Board of County Commissioners approved today, is they approved for the county staff to work with all interested parties, Port Authority and all, so we can all put in the best application we possibly can. And one of the things I think that Triumph Board will look at is who are your partners? Where is your buy-in in your community? And I think that's why they run some of this through an elected body like the Board of County Commissioners, is, you know, if your, if your elected boards are approving a project and submitting a project, it pretty much knows the public must support that. So I think, I think absolutely, there's no issue with involving all that we can and the more the merrier, I think. And I think that's the way our Board saw it today. We'll certainly include whoever, whoever you would like to do. And if you're interested in doing a letter from the Mayor or from the city or from you as a Board, we'd, you know, we'd certainly put that in that pre-application. I'm going to do another one of these presentations at the city of Weewalk next week and I meet with the school superintendent tomorrow or the next day. And we'll, and we'll make that same presentation to the school board. And so hopefully, we can all put our heads together over and beyond just this one project and get a number of projects that might fit into, into this pot of money. It's a huge pot of money and over 15 years, it's over $60 million for Gulf, for each county, for over Gulf County. So we all need to be in the boat.
One question, Mr. Yager. Do you have the address for the folks to send in their application to? I noticed, because that's one thing we put on the website, they're going to ask for the, for the location to send in their application.
We do not have that yet. They have not, they are in the process of standing up an office and we don't have that yet. However, we'll get that soon.
Will they do by the 15th of November with the pre-application?
That's correct. While I'm here, I just will talk real briefly. I know, don't want to take up too much of your time, but Pot 3 money too, you have a number of projects in Pot 3 money and we're getting closer and closer to that point that we're going to submit that to what they call a council for their approval. You have several projects on there. You've got some sewer rehab, you have, I think, the beaches sewer system. To the tune, I think we started with four or five million dollars, but I think in submitting the application, the, our grant consultant said, we need to submit for everything that we can get. We'll, we'll look for more monies to put with that pot, when you got that pot. So I think on behalf of the city of Port St. Joe, you've got about $10 million worth of projects in that particular pot. It's another pot that takes 12 to 15 years to fund. However, we believe by 2018, towards the end of 2018, we'll already be divvying out money for you to start with doing some design work on these projects so we can get the design work done preliminary. So that's just, that's coming down the pike and I know we've talked to some of your other staff about that. So it's, it's an opportunity for us to all help benefit citizens of Gulf County and not, not go into debt. So just wanted to report on that pot for you just coming in.
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And glad you're doing it.
Thank you.
All right. Port St. Joe redevelopment, is there any updates on it?
No updates, Mayor.
All right. Okay. Mr. Attorney.
All right. Nothing for you for this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Old business, Jim, go ahead.
Yes, sir. First thing, we got a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday, 10-24 at noon. A couple of big projects going on. We want to discuss Long Avenue, start talking about water, sewer, stormwater on Long Avenue and also about the water meters that we have put in the budget. Next Tuesday at noon here. All right. The next item we have is a reference to PDRB membership. As the Board requested, we did go out and advertise for, Mayor. If you were looking at your package, you will see that you received a couple of applications and you'll see the actual terms for the existing folks and has requested their attention before you...
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak on this. I know that the three Board members that are currently up would like to serve another three-year term. And after looking at the attendance sheet, we've got one, Mr. Campbell, I think he's living in Tallahassee now, who's only been able to attend one meeting. And then Wallace Leslie has only attended four. And right now, the Board currently sits with eight people, which makes for, is it seven?
Seven.
I count eight.
One of those, if you'll notice, is a darker line.
Oh, I got you. Ms. Alice Martin is gone.
Yes, sir.
I would say, let's go ahead and accept these two applications and remove Mr. Campbell and Mr. Leslie.
Who were the two applications?
Ms. Letha Matthews and Ms. Sigg.
Now, she, Ms. Letha?
Yes.
Did you ever turn in one? They said you never did. When you turned in, was it the right one?
Well, I turned it in, but I turned it in to the wrong location there.
Okay. Are you going to turn another one in?
Well, I passed the deadline. They said the deadline was Friday and Ms. Charlotte said that was the deadline.
Did we set a deadline?
We put an ad in the paper.
I think it was by the RFP.
I mean, we could...
There's an RFP in the paper with a deadline of 10-13. Ms. Letha did turn one in, but it was for the county and a different Board and we discussed it, gave that back to her so she could take it to the county. Yes, sir, we did discuss that.
Well, hey, stick with the rules, Mr. Mayor. Why don't we just go ahead and put Jim Sicles in and then open it up again and take another round of battles?
We can do that, Jim.
That would be, that's the most fair way to do it.
Yeah.
Can you guess, do I want, Ms. Matthews?
I shall.
You're going to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
We got a motion, Commissioner Asbrooke, Secretary of State. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Sibley, you asked for it.
That was, that was to remove Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Campbell, yeah.
He's the only one that attended one.
And run it, run it one more time. And Ms. Matthews?
Then you get a shot.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
All right. All right. What next, Jim?
Yes, sir. On the new business, first item we have is in reference to the CDBG grant cycle, a new cycle coming up for an update too. We did have a meeting today. We are kicking off the CDBG for the existing water line replacements, sir. We started that today as well. But I'll turn that over to Mr. Bruce Powell to talk about the new one there.
And what does that mean that you restored that today?
What we did is we gave a notice to proceed to the contractor. He said he was beginning work next Monday, Mayor.
All right. Hey!
How you doing, all that, man? As you know, I've been doing CDBG work here for about 11, 12 years. When I started, we were doing sewer projects that had an ENF first and then moved on down the street and getting ready to put in for phase three and the water problems hit. So we're going to do the water before I want, that's about to get underway, we finished that, and they're good. But there's enough time for Mr. Howard, he had enough time to probably work an application in before the next cycle starts.
Okay.
The current cycle should run until, he said, March, April. So they're in the middle of another rule change. They seem to move a rule change every year and a half.
Right.
And it could go longer. So we probably have time to go out and get the door-to-door interviews, kick it off. But I just need your authority to go ahead and hold CATF meetings in advance of another first public hearing. Probably start with the CATF list that we have and see if we need to do any modifications to it.
And we do have some sewer problems there in that area, you're still needing...
They're still needing infiltration deals.
They wouldn't qualify.
Yes, and actually sewer projects score more points than water projects.
Is that right? I don't have any motion.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, Commissioner Asbrooke, Secretary of State. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you much.
You got it. Thank you.
Keep going.
All right.
The next item we have, Mayor, is a reference to the zoning of parcel 04939-00R, which is also known as 2008 7 Street. This is the property that is directly behind the express lane, Mayor. It's actually residential, it's been a residential home for as far as I can remember back. What we have is a request to consider like we did on the property on Woodward Avenue, to create an ordinance that says that, okay, we realize it's C1, commercial district, but allow for residential use too in there. We did that for one that was across from Craig Union and I believe you got the same request today for that piece of property. We have anybody here today to speak on it?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, Commissioner Mizet.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Asbrooke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U.
We'll bring back an ordinance, so I'll represent that for you.
Okay.
The next item we have is a reference to the Legislative Budget Request, 2018, 2019. It's that time again to get your thoughts together, what you want to apply for, for legislative appropriation. The last couple of years, we've applied for things like beaches sewer. We were lucky last year, successful with the Jones Homestead project that we're moving forward on. Was also applied for Cape sewer unsuccessfully on there. So get your thoughts together, we got a little bit of time, but yes, sir, we need to get in an application.
I think we need to shoot for Long Avenue again. We've got it, shovel ready.
Need to get finished.
And hopefully, one of our main arteries in the city, it needs to be done. So I would hope that we look at that kind of as a priority. I think we've got two, the applications for the beach and the cape, again to the, to the BP oil spill, that's one of the projects Warren was just talking about. So I would love to see us shoot for that again. I'll make that form of a motion if I need to.
We'll do it tonight or we can wait until the next week?
I'll second that. I mean, I think that this whole Board probably needs to agree. We put it in there, let's get it done.
Yes. Motion, Commissioner Mizet, and second, Commissioner Asbrooke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U.
The last item I have is something that came in today. This is actually our certification of final taxable value, the reference to DR 422. This is in reference to Value Adjustment Board. Value Adjustment Board did meet yesterday and if you pull it out, it's a handout in your, in your pocket tonight that I got for you. The initial value that we had, the current gross value, was 290,890,019. After the Value Adjustment Board, your value came in at 284,431,826. This is a difference of 2.22%. So you ask, what does this mean? What this means for the city is the difference on there is based on your current mileage at 3.5914, gives you a difference of $23,194 is what it will show as a shortage in your budgetary amount for this year. Based on that amount, we were, we were concerned that it could have been in the range of $50,000 to $60,000 to begin with. After the Value Adjustment Board, it did, kudos to Mr. Burke, they did work it down to $23,000 for the city. Recommendation based on that amount would be to keep your mileage the same instead of going through that lengthy process, to try to adjust your mileage based on the Value Adjustment Board of 2.2% difference and change. We will have to hold off on purchasing a few things to make up that difference of $23,000, but that will be staff recommendation. We have to get this back by the 20th, so we don't have it a couple of days. Staff recommendation would be to hold the line on your mileage on here. We'll work through it at the staff level to try to make sure we hold back money on purchases until we make up that difference.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Asbrooke.
Second, so you're discussing this question. Is the St. Joe Company going to challenge the Value Adjustment Board's decision or would they, did they accept it or is it...
To my understanding, it was accepted, to my understanding. I don't know of any legal ramifications to this. I don't know.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U.
Mayor, Mr. Grant is not here tonight. If you'll be to explain to you what you have on RFP under public works for you.
Yes.
We had two RFPs that we opened up last week in reference to public works. These alternate A and alternate B. What these were, were areas that were not covered under the CDBG. We didn't have adequate funding for it, but what we're going to do is do the work in hand. The money's coming from the Water Management District, because I just assumed the sum of $80,000. We opened up bids for the materials. If you'll turn over to page 11, show you what we received on the materials itself. We received two bids, one from Lanier at $23,214.33 and HD Supply, $29,514.40. Staff recommendation is to recommend approval for the bid pending approval from the Water Management District for your materials themselves.
Move. All right. Motion, Commissioner Mizet.
Second.
Secretary of State, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U.
Mayor, RFP 2017-14, which will be the boards for both the alternate A and alternate B areas, we wasn't as successful. We only received one bid. It came in, we believe, was a little high, 42,720. Staff recommendation is to go out, back out the bid for this one again. I would imagine the Water Management District would require that, be only one bid received. So that would be staff recommendation.
Any motion on that?
Yes, sir.
So, motion, Commissioner Asbrooke, Secretary of State, so this is easy. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U. All right. That it, Jim?
Yes, sir.
For you? All right. Mr. Larry, what you got for us?
RFP 2017-15, clerk buyer, three and four renovation. We did get the bids in for this. Sad report though, the low bid submitted, I was asked to, for us to renew that based on the fact they just said they did not account for the full scope of work, less than the bid spec. So they really was bidding on one instead for both of them. So we need to probably throw that out and take the next alternate bid.
Which is Shell Co.
Shell Co.
What do you know about Shell Co? Are they a good company?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, I did get some references from them. I did contact their references and they've got an excellent reputation, to be honest with you. And they're also more, they're out of Dosent, Alabama, a little closer to home. So I would recommend them.
And I'll also add, guys, that by doing this, we're within our budget.
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion to a sub Shell Co meeting.
All right. Motion, Commissioner Asbrooke.
Sir.
Secretary of State, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care is three U. What else you got, Mayor? That's it. Saul?
Yes, sir.
My next, Derek.
We're still working on end-of-year budget process. We've spoken with our auditors and they're coming in this week to continue that process. We're moving on with our new fiscal year. I don't have anything other than that. Does anybody have any questions?
Saul, you got to find some money.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's fine, $23,000.
We'll get it, we'll find it.
We can find it, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Kevin?
We've got three pumps out right now at different locations. Two out of three is things that we're going to pull and repair ourselves. The grid king's the only thing that's stopped in our system. Everything else is working. So, you know, we've got alternate pumps in some locations. So that's where we are, and it's just wear time. And San, we have some applications, so we've, a grid king pump, it's the one that's not working, and we've got a spare which will drop in tomorrow. So then they're going to be back up and running, we just have to fix a piece of bar, two parts.
And it's sunny?
Some structures are working. We've got one of the solar bees that, they just came through, and they did the whole, everything seemed to be working, but I hadn't gotten a report on it. We haven't done that. So I've just contacted them and let them know, so they, people back around. So that's our solar bees, the variation that we're doing. So we'll get that back up and see if they can get turned back around and get back that way.
All right. Kevin, can you budget for the pumps that were out, the two out of three, I mean?
These were repair items, so we've got the repair budget. So none of those kind of things will be outside of the budget, and these are small-ticket items. We hope, you know, we hope they, one of them is a note ticket, you know, we've got the spare, and then when we get time or convenience here for us to rebuild, you know, one of the pumps.
And what about your staff levels? You would back out?
We're going to repost. I'm still training the, our new hire.
Right.
And I need to get him one more time. He's doing well, so just need to get him a little personal time before I cut him loose so I can start...
So you're still down one?
Still down one. So we'll post again as soon as we're confident it's a good time, which will be pretty soon.
Anything else, Kevin? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Really, the only thing I have for you tonight, I already touched on CDBG, and Long Avenue is coming, yes, sir. Really, the only thing that I have for you is to vote for it, and the timeline, just finish it. Talk to the contractor today, they're ready, you know, in a couple of weeks, they'll be in a notification, they're ready to come in in a couple of weeks and knock it out. And put it, October 30th will be that Monday, I think, and then you have an idea, they beat us by Thanksgiving, three weeks later, so. Can we get a notification in the newspaper to let people know that what is going to be happening? Just to let them know, hey, we're going to be completely shut down for, what, three weeks? That's right. And the idea is that good, you know, the grant expires the end of December, so that we're not running up against some deadlines we absolutely miss, but...
Both sides will be closed down for three weeks?
Yes, sir. That's to do that work in front, to tear out that asphalt that's still up there.
How long?
Three weeks.
How about the landscaping, Paul? Are they going to do landscaping on the side where the tour are all hooked in?
It'll get grassed back, yes, sir. It's not finished, they're trying to grade it out, and they actually still have sidewalk report on it, you can see the walk, that's, they're still adding more grading, yes, sir. They still have, oh, it's pretty, I'm working on it.
And our request for those ancillary items with the leftover money?
Still working on it.
Still working on it? It's not dead?
I hadn't taken no yet, that's the final answer, still working.
Okay. And also, Clay, I had talked to Jason Chubb of the Triumph Board about long... He said that would be a stretch, and so we'll just look, we'll look elsewhere and keep that project going forward.
Okay.
I see. Third enforcement, with the paper, getting all your notifications, for sure. All right. Which one?
We don't have anything.
You do. It's on here.
Mayor, you want me to explain that, what do we have on that? What we have is, we have a dispatch contract with the sheriff's office to handle our dispatching car, is what we have out there. In the past couple of years, it's been $66,000. It is a little bit of an increase, it's $71,000 this year. There are some requirements on the actual computer upgrades on that, and it is in the budget for this year, but yes, sir, we are asking for your permission to sign the dispatch contract.
No, we're no. Second. Motion, Commissioner Wazir, second, Commissioner Asprey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care's three U. Hey, I still want to achieve to get the NRT down here and look at First Street.
First Street and 98.
There's no sense in it not being both sides the same way.
Yeah, it's a strange intersection.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, in your package, you have a code red contract renewal. We've been with code red for a number of years. This upgrades things without any additional cost to the city, and we would just need your approval on that and move forward.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great program. It's the quickest way to notify everybody at one time. I'll make a motion to accept that contract.
I've got a motion, Commissioner Asprey?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wazir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Care's three U. Anything else, Michelle?
No, sir. I do not have anything else.
We have another meeting before Ghosts on the Coast.
No, sir, we shouldn't.
Just remind me, we got Ghosts on the Coast coming up. We have about $150 worth of candy just the other night. Little monkey's going to get some candy from me. All right. Before I have any citizens that wish to be heard, first, is there any citizens that wish to be heard tonight? They said yes.
Yes.
Okay. Come on up.
Chester Davis, PAC president, went to the Tri-Fund, we know so, and we asked them